Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council meeting. This is Monday, December 6th at 7:00 PM and we are in regular session tonight. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum. All members but one are here with us tonight. The next item of business is disposition of minutes and these are for the regular session held on October 18th, a regular session held on November 1, and a special session held on November 8. If I could have a motion for approval of these minutes?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and these minutes have been approved. The next item of business is communications and we do have a letter to council from Mr. John Spaforth that is dated November 20 and council members have received this and this will be attached to the minutes for the record, the official record of city council. Are there other communications from council members? Okay, if none, we'll move to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason?
No.
Okay. Mayor Patterson?
I have a couple items tonight, President Isley. The first one is that there's a publication that goes out, it's called Small Towns in Rural Planning, and this is put out by the American Planning Association and Athens is being recognized for the Athens, Ohio 2040 Comprehensive Plan and will be receiving the John Keller Award for Planning Initiative. So, and Paul Loeb, he is mentioned all over inside this thing, which is great.
Yay. Actually, Paul deserves a hand. He did so much work on that and it's so inclusive of all the voices in Athens and I really appreciate that it's being, that's being recognized by the APA. That's awesome.
And if I can add to that just briefly, in this little article that they wrote up, it's, it's always a good reminder that our city planner was able to do that for $4,000 as opposed to the first comprehensive plan, which was hundreds of thousands of dollars. Excuse me. So just wanted to point that out. The other thing I want to point out, I don't think anyone can see this in the viewing world, I don't know Scott or Ryan, if you guys can zoom in on this award, but this is rather interesting too. We're receiving an award from the American Society of Highway Engineers and it is the city being recognized for 2020 project being the Richland Avenue Pedestrian Passageway for, I believe it was a project of less than $5 million construction cost. I thought it was a little bit higher, but there you have it.
We don't want to.
And I'd also like to add to this award, you know, I've spoken to Student Senate, I've spoken to a number of student organizations and the students really seem to appreciate at least the information they're giving me. They really appreciate the Richland Avenue Pedestrian Passageway as a way that they can safely cross through now a de-conflicted area that we experienced lots of conflict in the past. So again, wanted to share and that's all I have for tonight, President Isley.
Okay, thank you. And we have City Treasurer Mary Ann McClure who's joining us tonight with a report on interest.
Thank you, President Nigel.
Yes.
Betty Walker was kind enough to include copies of my report in your packet for tonight. It does go all the way through what I know about November, there might be a few dollars change. This is officially the third quarter report through October, but I did, you can see the quarter totals and I do want to draw your attention to the year-to-date total, which is quite a bit higher than the projected because I did, we just have two three-year certificates of deposit come due at Hockenberry Bank, so we had three years of interest posted in November. And I do have a note that 160,000 plus of that is actually accrued for two prior years. So while it'll show up in the cash interest, that it will get posted to 2021 the full amount because some of it's sort of been accrued. So that still, even at the end of November brings us within $7,400 and change to the projected amount, so we'll come very close to that, maybe short by about $3,350.
Good. That's good news. Yeah, thank you. Questions? Does any, do any of the council members have questions? And while you're still there, I would like to make a, take a moment. Mary Ann McClure has served us as the Athens City Treasurer since 2002, so 20 years of service to the city. And December 31st, I think is going to be our last day. We wish it wasn't, but we just wanted to thank you for everything you've done over the years and in watching out for the city and monitoring this and working with the Auditor's Office and it's truly made a difference, so I think, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, it's been my pleasure.
All right. And I don't believe the auditor is with us tonight, so we'll, that will finish our communications section. We'll now go move on to ordinances for second reading and I will read through the titles. I will pause briefly to see if there are questions or comments from folks and then move on as we read through these. Ordinance 11321 is an ordinance amending certain sections of the Athens City Code, Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 7.04, Chapter 7.05 Parking Regulations, introduced by Council Member Reisner. And if no questions or comments, I will move on to 13321. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23 Zoning Code, Chapter 23.08 Off-Street Parking and Loading/Unloading Regulations, and Chapter 23.10 Definitions Table B Off-Street Parking Requirements, introduced by Council Member Fall. No questions or comments? We will move on to 13821. This is an ordinance suspending Athens City Code Section 7.05.03 Continuous Parking in the Same Location from Sunday, December 19th, 2021 through midnight Saturday, January 1st, 2022 and Declaring an Emergency, introduced by Council Member Reisner. Any questions or comments? 13921 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into administrative services contract with the Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Program, known as HAPCAP, for community development block grants, those are known as our CDBG funds, program year 2022 and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Council Member Graves. Are there any questions or comments? 14021 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract extension to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Economic Development Council and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. 14121 is an ordinance authorizing 2022 staffing levels and non-union compensation, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. And if no questions? Then we will go on to 14221. This is an ordinance adopting a fringe benefits package for non-union personnel within the city of Athens and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Any questions or comments? 14321 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with the Employee Benefits Service Center to serve as the city's third-party health insurance administrator and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Council Member Crowell. If no questions or comments, we will move on to 14421. This is an ordinance authorizing a stop-loss group excess loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency, introduced by Council Member Crowell. If no questions or comments? Ordinance 14521 is an ordinance amending the Athens City Zoning Code Title 23 to encourage, to include short-term rentals as recommended by the Athens City Planning Commission. This is introduced by Council Member Fall. And do we have any questions or comments? Are most people questions? Any amongst council members? Is there anybody in the audience? Mr. Swank? Yes. And name an address and we'll set the timer.
Good evening. My name is Alan Swank and I live at Forty Townsend Place. Adam, President, before you start the timer, I have a procedural question to ask. Would that be okay?
Sure.
At the hearing on November 22nd, several questions, several citizens posed a variety of questions. Would it be possible to have the answers to those questions read into the public record this evening before members of the public address city council?
What has happened with multiple of those questions? Some of them were administrative questions and they have answered those, so they can read them into, and answer some of those questions. Other questions, I put out a frequently asked question to specifically answer those and that was with the, all the council members and everybody. And we also put an explainer out for each of those things. Rob Delac also put a question, an explainer for each of your questions out, so we can read that into, or we can actually present it because it's several pages.
Can we do that?
And do you, why don't you go ahead so we have it and go ahead?
Well, here they are. I mean, they already are public information because they came from me, so they are in the public record, so.
But they're not in the public domain. I don't think anybody, perhaps one person in here besides myself has seen those. So that's what I'm asking before other people have an opportunity to address council, it would be nice if they could hear the answers to those questions.
Okay. I think that the most pressing question was the idea of present. That is an administrative question about what it means to be present. I, I worked with the law director, the co-director, and the administration on this and they have came up with what as an administrative process they will do with that question, so.
But that's not the answer to the question that you have given to council. These are the questions I would like read to the public.
That's a more up-to-date question, answer, that I just got from today, so.
So we can read these in if you would like? He has a question?
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
Oh, these are the ones that I sent out to everybody. Do you want me to read them?
Please.
Okay.
Because after that, then I will.
Which ones would you like me to read?
That's all of them would be wonderful.
Okay. Some of the questions were asked. I think that the administrative issue and the process of this issue when it comes to administrative things is that the administration has been present and accountable for the whole process that we have gone through. The Planning Commission is the administrative center of this process. There's the administration, there's the legislation, which we are. And so that's one of the reasons why people have asked, well, why are we rushing it through and such? We've been talking about this for several years. It has been looked at, the administration, it's been looked at by the Safety Service Director, it's been looked at by the co-director, it's been looked at by the planner, lots and lots of years of professional service there. I like to think of the bill, you know, goes through process, goes through public comment. There's been public comment for multiple hours on this. The other administrative issue, which the mayor can take on, is code can't take this on. Well, we are in the process of hiring people. However, the code can use multiple strategies in order to do their job. One of the strategies is looking at outside, outside contracts to be able to look and to provide a service of looking at, making sure that all the short-term rentals are paying their taxes, providing services for both the short-term rental owner, renter, and for the, the guest that comes in. I don't know if Steve wants to talk about that more or, but that's, the administration has looked at that, has started working on that. This is something that I know that, that the mayor has looked at multiple times because this is what's in. When we go to conferences and stuff, these are the new services that are provided. And this, the owner occupying house. We worked, we talked about that today with the law director and she feels that there's really no problem with the wording. And so from that and from what David Riggs has said about the new, short-term, I don't know what you would call, an outside contractor to help keep our short-term rentals in compliance. It's a compliance contractor. And so that, once again, is an administrative thing. They have looked at that, they've looked at all the issues that have been said by all the people who've been talking about this, emailing it, calling us, and this is what they have come up with that. 30 days, somebody asked about 30 days, that's a, why is it 30 days? It's tax code, you know. Could be 15 or what? State decided 30 days. And then there's a bunch of planner talk, which I don't think they really need to go through, so. Citizens policing each other, we do that now. Everything we do is as a community. We watch out for people, we talk to our neighbors, that's what a community does. Doesn't seem like people have too much of a problem with that, given some of our other things that people look at and public, like citizen policing. And, you know, I talked with, with Paul and kind of looking at the future of this. What are we ultimately looking at in the next few years? Probably a handful of BZA, R3, are, you know, those ones where you have to get a little bit more protection, more permission. There'll probably be a handful of that. There'll probably be another handful of people who've been doing short-term rentals as it is, like, like, people who came here. Yeah, Diane McVeigh, thank you. And they'll, they'll, you know, sign them up and that's probably the what we'll see in the next three years. So it's not going to be a huge rough, not going to be like this huge amount of momentum to go and change everything out in the neighborhoods. So, questions?
And before we start, I just want to give the mayor, if you want an opportunity to respond to any of those comments before Mr. Swank?
I, I can. I've pulled up the response from David Riggs in terms of several questions here, and if you bear with me, there's quite a bit here. The first question that Director Riggs answered was, in an R1 zone, does the owner have to be present? And his interpretation is the proposed code language only addresses whether a property is owner occupied or not. The second question was off-street parking requirements for short-term rentals and he just indicates that this has been addressed through the short-term, are the off-street parking ordinances rolling through and the amendment made? And I can make this public as well, it's a public record since it's an email response to these questions. What is the process for reporting violations? This would be the same procedure as for normal rentals under Athens City Code 29.02.03. What are the penalties? Again, the same as normal rentals. This would be under Athens City Code 29.03.10 and 29.09. The next question, in non-R1 zones, why go to the BZA? And his answer was owner occupied short-term rentals will be permitted in R1, R2, R3, B1, B2, B3, and M zones. Non-owner occupied short-term rentals will be conditionally permitted in R1 and R2 zones. Non-owner occupied short-term rentals will be permitted in R3, B1, B2, B3, and M zones. The BZA will be required for the conditional uses in R1s and R2 zones, which is required under Athens City Code 23.07.02A. Why limit the number of short-term rentals, rental units to two in all zones? Units to two in all zones. The limit of the two short-term rental units applies only to R1 and R2 zones. Beginning in R3 and including B and M zones, any number of rental units are allowed per Athens City Code 23.04.032. So those are the answers that were submitted by Director Riggs.
Okay. Right.
Okay, thank you very much for the answers, which were very insightful and appreciate them. Of the many questions asked of council at the hearing, there are three answers that I'd like to address this evening. The first is the definition of owner occupied. I quote from the answers. "The idea of occupancy is the person who owns the house lives in the house. Thus, the house is occupied even if the owner goes out for dinner and is not at home." Home being the operative word. End quote. I don't think anyone believes that the owner of the home has to be present during the entire rental, entire rental period. What citizens are concerned about are properties like the three on the list that I provided during the hearing. The first property owner lives in Columbus and Florida and occasionally in Athens. The second owner, four bedrooms and 10 guests, lists that they live in Charlotte, North Carolina. And the third owner states that they rent the property when they travel. These are not examples of owner occupied, a term that needs to be further clarified and addressed before consideration of this ordinance. The second question involves citizens policing and enforcement. Again, I quote, "We do this now, noise, litter, too long of turf grass, sunflowers in the front yard, et cetera. All communities do this. Seems to me most people have no problems with this idea." End quote. There's a huge difference between the concern about too many occupants in a short-term rental and grass violations. A grass violation called in today will continue to be a violation until the grass is mowed, until the grass is mowed, giving code plenty of time to address the situation. An occupancy violation on the weekend will be long gone by the time our code office, officers get in the office on Monday morning. As for most people having no problems with this, many people want to maintain good relationships with their neighbors and many cases have just decided to live with noise, litter, and long grass. The third question involves why 30 days? The concern about the answer is really the issue here. Again, I quote, "ORC code and tax language is why it is 30 days. Not sure why 30, but who cares, frankly?" End quote. Who cares, frankly? I care. I'm assuming the six council members who I sat with in this very room during council and orientation Monday care, and I know that my neighbors and the citizens of the fourth ward who I will represent in four short weeks care. Why could I have one care rate?
All right.
It's because of that care and concern for all the residents of Athens that many have come before council or written emails respectfully asking that this ordinance be put aside so that a short-term rental policy that protects the property and entrepreneurial rights of those who choose to rent their properties, as well as the rights of those who have chosen to live in the city, can be refined and put in place. In other words, to pass a short-term rental ordinance. Tonight, I would ask that you could seriously consider this request again. Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody else in the audience who wants to make a comment or ask a question? Yes.
Thank you. Mary Abel, 48, Strathmark. I just want to mention one thing regarding the short-term rental zoning and affordable housing. I attended almost every meeting of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee a couple, three years ago. There was lots of discussion in that committee and a report was generated that was before council. Affordable housing issues have not been resolved in Athens and they've not been resolved in many cities. Now, there has been discussion during this that some STRs could help people with their housing need. The Furman Center at New York University has a plethora of case studies and information on a website regarding local housing solutions. In one of their case studies, they write, "While a short-term rental is economically, in economically distressed markets, can provide income to keep homeowners in their home, it may also remove units from year-round supply, thus driving up the cost of housing." In another study, January 2019, the Economic Policy Institute found that Airbnbs raise the local housing costs. Expansion of Airbnbs reduce the supply of housing when properties shift from serving local residents to serve Airbnb travelers. It is doubtful that short-term rentals will provide a solution to the affordable housing issue in Athens. It may make a dent, but it certainly is not going to be one of the ways that we need to really solve our affordability housing issue in this city. And I just, that may be very clear to people on council, but there may be people in the viewing office or audience who are not too sure of that. Certainly there are a lot of studies where you can go and find this information and I would certainly recommend going to the one at the Furman Center of New York because they've done a lot of research in housing issues. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. All right. If no other comments, Mr. Stauffer? Yes.
I need approximately 3 minutes and 34 seconds. I'm fine with short-term rentals in R2, R3, and all B zones. I address and refer only to R1 zones and my, excuse me, and my and many others who oppose this attempt to benefit a very few at the same time a taking of property rights and putting at risk the quality of life we currently enjoy in R1. There is no upside to the general citizens. Let me first quote from the Athens Messenger dated October 19th, 2016, five years ago, by Chris Fall. "We will work through this so that people have their property rights and people have their conditions that they moved into their neighborhoods with, all respected and protected." I had a conversation with Chris Fall today. She informed me that in some ordinances, there are definitions. In this ordinance, there is no definition. That will be up to Lisa Eliason. I only want to know, and after over five years of discussion, that the definition of present seems to be a gray area. Chris said there has been no discussion between her and Lisa Eliason in regards to what the city of Athens will have for the definition of present. After checking with the code office today, there is no definition. I'm also left to wonder how any type of oversight or enforcement will be addressed. This may be politics to you folks, but it is clearly a quality of life issue to us regular folks who only request that you not diminish our peace and enjoyment of our homes in residential 1 zones. I emphasize, R1 is short for residential, single family. I emphasize, R1 is short for residential, single family. I'm not asking for political favoritism. I'm asking to maintain our current quality of life. In rentals, whether it be family or student rentals, there is still a sense of community and understanding between neighbors. If a situation arises, it can be discussed and resolved. With transients or short-term rentals, you lose that sense of community. I will ask you to table this until you have further discussion with Ms. Eliason and all the fresh eyes that will come onto this council from the past election. Short of that, attach Webster's dictionary, excuse me, attach Webster's definition of present, a Google search "to be present," the fact or condition of a being in a certain place, the state of fact of being present, immediate vicinity, the actual person or thing present, the part of space within one's immediate vicinity, something present of a visible or concrete nature. Or leave R1 completely out of this ordinance. Have, and if you must, have R1 affected only on the main thoroughfares as they pass through the residential R1 neighborhoods, so there is not denigration of lifestyle. And with all that said, there seems to be no means or plan for any enforcement or penalties for noncompliance. Even hotels have a front desk at all times to voice concerns. I would remind council that a petition was given some time back with 260-some signatures of people opposed to this short-term rentals in the R1.
Mr. Stoffer, you've had four and a half minutes, so if you can close, that would be great.
Okay, give me 30 seconds.
Thank you.
My east side neighborhood that I worked, Sunnyside, Maplewood, Elmwood, Hudson, Lorraine, and a little more, I got 68 noes, we're opposed, two yeses, and three I'll need to read and study. That's 93% opposition. And remember, the Near East Side will be the most greatly affected. Let me note to you that the BZA is instructed to not allow for anyone's financial situation or status to be taken into consideration. And further, this will discourage future development of hotels and motels. Remember, Chris, you're only as good as your word. Respected and protected. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, everyone, for the comments and questions. We'll now move on to ordinance 14621. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29, Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.03, Rental, Dwelling, and Housing Permit. If no comments or questions, we'll move on to 14721. This is an ordinance amending certain sections of Athens City Code Title 17, Municipal Income Tax, Chapter 17.03, Transient Guest Tax. And if no questions or comments, we'll move on to 14821. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established to Include Short-Term Rentals, introduced by Council Member Fall. And if no questions or comments on these, we will now move on to ordinances, our ordinances for first reading. 14921 is an ordinance amending the 2021 Appropriation Ordinance and authorizing the auditor to make an inter-fund transfer. This is introduced by Council Member Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'll just go ahead and outline the three appropriations in this ordinance. As discussed at committee, there will be $25,000 appropriated to the general fund for parking enforcement for our IPS services, $7,437.03 to the CDBG Fund, 248, and $60,000 to the garbage fund, 760, for refuse recycling and composting, December payment. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, we'll move on with ordinance 15021. This is an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, President Isley. As discussed in committee, this is our 2022 budget. Documents we have on our drive, three pages in length, we have gone through, and obviously many other pages in addition to this basically summary of the 2022 budget. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. If none, we'll move on to ordinance 15121. This is an ordinance authorizing the annual compensation with a municipal court clerk, introduced by Council Member Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. Working with the municipal court judge and the auditor's office and the city of Athens' Human Resource Director's office, the clerk of the municipal court position was put in alignment with the pay grade study that was done within the city of Athens, and that then results in a hourly rate of $30.64 for the clerk of court. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? If none, ordinance 15221. This is an ordinance to provide for an increase in the general city income tax of 10 hundredths percent, .1% per annum for a period of 20 years, beginning January 1, 2023, authorizing the question of the increase to be placed on the ballot at the next primary election to be held on May 3, 2022. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, President Isley. This and the next ordinance, both are about an income tax levy from the city of Athens for public safety capital improvements and equipment. As mentioned in the title, it would be a .1% income tax levy that would be asked of the voters of the city of Athens for inclusion in order to make very important public safety improvements and equipment purchases. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to say that I really believe that this ordinance, to place it on the ballot for the voters to decide on, is extremely important. I think from the dramatic video footage that we saw the other night, pretty much made that very clear, that you simply can't have our public safety personnel in a building that's starting to fall down. I urge people to support it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, none, we'll move on to ordinance 15321. This is an ordinance amending, ordinance 3321, to increase the authorized expenditure for the Kimes Reservoir Project Number 324, and that is introduced by Council Member Grace.
I'll pop up.
Thank you.
This is basically increasing the ordinance money by $245,000, by $45,000. So the funds were appropriated with the annual budget, so it's just an authorization is needed, and once approved, then they'll encumber the funds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 15421. This is an ordinance amending ordinance 9121, authorizing the service safety director to enter into a contract for the construction of dugouts for fields 1 and 2 at the West State Street Park. This is project number 341, introduced by Council Member Grace. And Council Member Fall will speak for Council Member Grace.
So this is an increase from $65,000 to $70,000 that is being asked in the amendment so that they can go forward with the dugout shade structures and installation of a fence.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, none. Ordinance 15521 is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to upgrade and retrofit high and low-mast HPS lighting to LED lighting on a portion of US 33 within the city of Athens and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Council Member Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a copy of the ordinance in front of me or on the disk drive, but memory serves me, essentially, AEP is going to be changing the high-intensity sodium lamps that are on the utility poles that are within the city limits. One thing we didn't discuss in committee, and it just occurred to me today, was the fact that the city of Athens has to pay the electric bill for all the lamps that are within the city limits. So the high-intensity lamps that are used right now consume electricity at a phenomenal rate, and they're quite a moneymaker for AEP, actually. So they don't want to give them up. But so the fact that they're turning them over or switching them out to LEDs is a win-win situation for the city. It's just a better lighting, and it's going to be cheaper in the long run for our bills, and they last much longer, so we should support this legislation.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll now move on to the resolution for first reading. This is the corollary resolution to the income tax proposed increase to put it on the ballot. Resolution 1321, a resolution to place the issue of increasing the city income tax by 10 hundredths percent, .1% per annum, beginning January 1, 2023, on the ballot at the next primary election on May 3, 2022, and directing the Board of Elections of Athens County to conduct the election. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, President Isley, and I apologize for my comment earlier that the next ordinance would be coupled with this resolution. It is, of course, this resolution. I'm going to go ahead and read this due to the importance of this for the citizens of Athens. Whereas the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, has determined that pursuant to Section 718 of the Ohio Revised Code, the issue of increasing the city income tax from the current 1.85% to 1.95% annually effective January 1, 2023, shall be placed on the ballot at the next general election. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio. Section 1, the Board of Elections of Athens County, Ohio, is hereby directed to conduct an election at the next primary election on May 3, 2022, on the issue of increasing the Athens city income tax by an additional 10 hundredths percent, .10%, to 1 and 95 hundredths percent, 1.95% per annum, effective January 1, 2023. Section 2, the Board of Elections of Athens County, Ohio, is hereby directed that the ballot of said election shall be in the following form. Shall the ordinance 015221, providing for an increase in the levy on income from 1 and 85 hundredths percent, 1.85%, by an additional 10 hundredths percent, .10%, to 1 and 95 hundredths percent, 1.95% annually, effective January 1, 2023, for the purpose of providing funds for public safety, capital improvements, and equipment be passed, question mark, for the income tax or against the income tax? Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember McCary?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question just about the general options for funding something like a new fire station and other safety facilities. It's my understanding that this is the most common way for a city to resolve this kind of issue, but I'm hoping that any of my more experienced council members or administration might have comments on if there are other ways that cities sometimes pursue this kind of need and why we're going with the levy.
Any council members wish to comment? Well, I personally, I know the mayor does have some comments, and I personally don't have any personal experience with following other cities and how they've done it other than the income tax levy.
I as well, President Isley, in terms of a fire station or anything like that, but what I can say, Madam McCary, is that, you know, we did have a levy on the ballot for arts parks and recreation, and the major funded item out of that was, again, the pool, which was a $7 million project. You know, the smartest way to fund something like the pool or the headquarters is via bonds. I don't think there's a lending institution out there that would ever loan that amount of money. So that's primarily how municipalities will fund having a project, especially something of that magnitude in terms of cost. And it would typically be a ballot initiative. I mean, this is getting it out to the public and asking the public to vote yes or no to the funding for a fire station. So it's, I'm not going to say it's atypical. I think it's probably very typical when it comes to building, you know, something that's expensive as that, or, again, a swimming pool. I don't know if that completely answers your question.
Good question, and, yeah, all right.
I would only add then, if there is any opportunity to identify other strategies cities have used, I don't think we can do a big sale for this, as you said, but it'd be just, I think, helpful for the public to even understand how we typically address this kind of challenge and why we're going with a proposed levy.
I think one of the things is people say, well, we can write grants, and they're, but this is something that you do not write a grant for. There are no grants out there unless you get something pretty much through the capital project, the capital bill in the state. These sort of things are mostly either bonds or levies. And we look at the other levies that are in place, you know, for other services that are in the city, so.
Okay, thanks for your question. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Swank?
Yes, real quick, just procedural. I could not agree more with Councilmember Reisner. I didn't need to see the video. You just need to walk by the place and see it's ready to go. It's in bad shape. But my question is this, how many more council meetings are there going to be during calendar year 2021?
There will at least be one more.
Okay, well, the reason I ask that, this is at first reading, and the other ordinance that Member Crowell mentioned is at first reading, if there's only going to be one more, it may necessitate suspending the rules.
Right.
Here's my concern. We're moving into December. Whether, we only have six people here tonight. If we were to show up at the next council meeting with only five and need a motion to suspend the rules, we would not have six votes, and we could not act upon that. So I'm wondering, would it be in the best interest of council and the city and the safety of the citizens of this city to consider suspending the rules this evening and passing not only this resolution but the previous mentioned ordinance? Get a snowstorm and there's no council meeting, we're into next year, and this has to be on the ballot filed by, I believe, February 2, which makes it very short, very tight. Just something I would throw out to consider.
Wow, thank you. I appreciate the comments.
You know, if it's snowing, it just come anyway. I think one thing is that if needed, special sessions can be arranged. We do not have to meet only on Monday. We can also meet other days, and we can do these, as long as we advertise it for the number of hours or days that we need to advertise it, that there can be special sessions.
So we could have three meetings, two additional meetings, so that we could get the third reading. But thank you, point well taken, Mr. Swank. Okay. Point well taken, Mr. Swank. Okay. All right. We'll now move on to announcements and other business, and I believe Councilmember Crowell, you have some appointments to the Environmental and Sustainability Commission.
Yes, we would like to, the Environment and Sustainability Commission recommends Caitlin Roush to council for appointment to the commission. Ms. Roush is a Ohio University student. She was considered for the student position that came open earlier in the year. We had two applicants, a graduate student and, and Ms. Roush, and since the graduate student is graduating this May, we thought it would be best to appoint the graduate student first, and as Ms. Roush is a junior, I believe, she will have another year, and then she could take the student position. She's a very engaged young woman, and she has been attending commission meetings even though she wasn't officially appointed as a commission member, and also been providing a lot of very helpful information to council about some issues in the city of Athens. So when an opening came up with Mr. Stefan Geisberg having resigned his position as he's moving out of the city, we thought that adding Ms. Roush to the commission was in the best interest of the commission and the city, and that's our recommendation to council. Thank you, President Nisley. And I believe everybody has her letter and her resume. And I'd like to make a motion to appoint Caitlin Roush to the Environmental and Sustainability Commission.
Okay, we have a motion in second for approval of Ms. Roush to the Environmental and Sustainability Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. We welcome her and her volunteer work with the commission. Okay, and then are there any other? We will be having a council meeting next Monday night, so we do have that. And do we have any other announcements that folks may make?
We're going to have a committee meeting Sunday?
We will, we will have a committee meeting, yes. There will be a committee meeting. And under the, so if no other announcements, we'll now move on to opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items that city services not covered on the agenda. And we do have two guests with us tonight, T. Ahmed, T. Ford Ahmed, and Jenny Nelson, who are here on behalf of the Mount Zion Baptist Church Preservation Society. And the city has worked with Mount Zion and this building, and this building is part of our historic square in the uptown redevelopment area, and has been very active. So I think they have it so you can, you're ready to go, and, and so what I'll do is I'll set the timer so it doesn't buzz at you midway through. I'll just set it for six minutes. Thank you very much for being here.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for inviting us here this evening, mayor, council members, ward members, our audience here tonight. Let me just say that in spite of the COVID-19, Mount Zion made significant strides during two thousand twenty-one. And the topic here, you see, where we, where we are, where we're going, is part of our annual meeting theme. There's a piece that's missing, but you'll, attend the meeting, you'll find out what's been missing. Let me say that what, many of the things that happened during two thousand twenty-one included federal, regional, state, and local awards, not to mention the incredible support from community volunteers and donations from local businesses. For example, Jackie O's Brewery partnered with Austin Brewery's Weathered Soul to introduce Black is Beautiful, a lager beer, with one hundred percent of the proceeds going to Mount Zion and one other nonprofit. Court Street Coffee offered their monthly tip jar to Mount Zion. Kindred Market gave up one cent on every dollar spent on Saturday. Passion Works gave twenty percent of their yard sale signs to Mount Zion. That's the kind of cooperation that we had within the community. There are more, but you all only gave us three minutes, so let me go on. These and other supporters and donors are highlighted and acknowledged at our upcoming virtual annual meeting on December the twelfth, one thirty to three P.M. I've sent invitations and announcements. The most of you have received that. Those signing into this event will be informed of those other supporters who have been, who are, and those who are currently assisting us with our ongoing projects. Those having significant impacts. Thank you. On where we are headed has been the city planning office and city planner Paul Load in particular, who helped us secure and then served as the fiscal agent for the Ohio Connection Certified Local Government Grant that assessed the property on thirty-two West Carpenter Street. The Ohio University students from the business school who performed significant research in finding out what graduates, what current students, even what local uptown businesses would like to have seen developed in the Mount Zion structure. Scripps School of Journalism, Media Arts, African-American Studies, and the School of Fine Arts, in particularly led by Professor Sam Dobbs, contributed to that vision also. Let me just show you. Those of you who have not been inside this church, take a look. You see the mold, the peeling of the ceiling, of the tin ceiling, but you can still see the splendor and the beauty of the particular building. Here we have Hardlines Design that got the certified local government grant to come in to assess the building. You can see the scaffolding here. This was led by an incredibly talented woman, Teresa.
Little bit.
Take it away, Jenny.
Oh, okay. In two thousand twenty, we received funding from the Appalachian Network Seed Learning Project Grant to produce a cultural, historical, and educational documentary film under the working title Black Wall Street, Athens County. The film chronicles the destruction of the black-owned and operated Albany Enterprise Academy, which had, in its heyday, had over two hundred students, most of them blacks, and also with a lot of women in the thing. And then that was destroyed. The Hotel Berry, as you probably know, was also destroyed to put in a parking lot, and now a rush to save Mount Zion. So we're entering the post-production phase of the documentary with plans for a premiere at the end of Black History Month at the Athena Cinema. We also have, and as part of the programming, reaching out to students in Athens County. The superintendent of Athens City School District is involved, as is a curriculum expert, which will help design exercises and stuff for students in the, in the area. We've also received local support from the Helen Horn Fund and the Noon Rotary Foundation to assist with protecting our million-dollar windows. So, take it away.
Okay, it was a federal grant, however, from National Endowment for the Arts, Citizens Institute for Rural Design, referred to commonly as CERD, however, that put it all together for us through a series of workshops which were conducted in the city, in the outlying areas of Stewart, in Kilvert, in Tabler Town, and also Albany. Our website offers a view of CERD's notebook on the vision page, if you'd like to view it. What you see in these last two slides are a combination of those workshops and the outreach by the design company appropriately named To Be Done, led by a talented CEO by the name of Omar Hakim. So looking toward the future, we see, we'll foresee, connecting with the emerging nonprofit that is working to restore the armory. We have pitched the concept over and over here that could be a viable tourism attraction here in the city. We called it Heritage Square, okay, which would begin at the college gate to which Edward Berry contributed, then move to where the Berry Hotel once stood, down the street to the armory, over to the Mount Zion, and then up to the Southeast Ohio History Center. Now, working with the Athens Convention and Visitors Bureau, I'll show you this last slide Visiting a bureau, we could very well incorporate the developing marijuana museum that's about to emerge on Highway Fifty. All of these are attractions that are waiting to happen. Mount Zion is reaching out to the Ebony Bobcat Network with the idea of the church that so many attended over the years as a heritage attraction, since there are approximately, you know how many? Twenty-eight thousand black bobcat alums. Tourism is where I hope we're headed.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
And we did it within our six minutes.
You had nine seconds left. You were close, you were close. All right. And if we could have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, we are adjourned at eight oh two P.M. We'll see you all next Monday night. Thank you.